So, good evening, everybody. Just to remind everybody, this meeting is being recorded, and all questions and comments are part of the public record and will be made part of the public record. If you have questions or comments, you can raise your hand with the little hand at the bottom of the screen or submit your question in the Q and A box, and we will either recognize you or attempt to answer your question. So with that, let's start with open forum. Does anybody have anything for open forum from the Select Board? Okay, oh, Anita.
Yeah, I just wanted to announce that the Cultural Council grant cycle is still open. They've extended the deadline for those who are interested in applying for Cultural Council funds. So that deadline is now November 1st. So you have until Monday to submit applications.
Great, thank you. And I guess I will announce and remind everybody, Halloween is Sunday night and is to be observed from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here in town. And the Westford Police Department on its Facebook page has put up the very helpful hints for having a safe Halloween for this community to take a look at. Okay, Mr. Butler, I see and I am aware that you would like to address the board in open forums. So Eric, if you could unmute Mr. Butler, and Mr. Butler unmute yourself, we can hear from you.
Great, thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Gerard Butler, and I represent Unicorn, Inc., who is a contractor that submitted the lowest bid for the window restoration project for the town museum. And I understand the board will vote later tonight on that contract. I think Mr. Akai Olia, who is the president of Unicorn, is also attending it by Zoom. And I understand that there's a recommendation that the town accept the higher bidder, in this case, whose bid exceeded the estimated cost of the project and also exceeded Unicorn's bid by more than 21%. The recommendation, as I understand, to accept the higher cost is made because Unicorn did not timely file a redundant form acknowledging that it understood the scope of the project for a second time. I would urge the board to accept Unicorn's bid and save the taxpayers more than $15,000 on the project because there's no question that Unicorn understood the supplemental specifications and the scope of this project. Mr. Olia was at the walkthrough and received all the emails. There's no question that this particular bidding process was an open and honest competition with all bidders on equal footing. And there's also no question that Unicorn was the lowest eligible bidder. The form it issued, this redundant form acknowledging that Unicorn understood that it was bidding on the project, was a minor formality that the town reserved the right to waive if it was in the best interest of the town. And in this case, the instructions for the bid stated that "a submission of a bid shall be considered conclusive evidence that the contractor has carefully examined the site of the proposed work and supplemental specifications." And then in the bid form itself that was timely filed by Unicorn, it affirmed that the bidder, in this case Unicorn, carefully read and examined the agreement, the specifications, and other contract documents therein, referred to, and knows and understands the terms and provisions therefor. So I respectfully suggest that there is no question here that this was a fair bidding process and that the reason, I believe, the only reason to reject the lower bidder in this case was a mere formality that Unicorn understood the scope of the project it was bidding on and then bid the low bid at $74,900. And the estimated cost was to be $90,000. And I understand the higher bidder came in with a bid at $90,675. I would respectfully urge the board to consider Unicorn's lower bid because it was a result of an open and fair bidding process. And I really appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. As you noted, the board will be voting on the contract later on this evening in our meeting at that time. But thank you for your comments tonight. Seeing nothing else for open forum, let's go to our next item, which is a discuss investigation of the electronic voting tabulators at town meeting. Hello, Angela, led by our town moderator.
Hi, everyone. So I'm here, yes, with my moderator hat on tonight to just ask for your support to reopen the investigation into whether or not we should use electronic vote tabulators at town meeting, otherwise known as clickers. Just, I don't want to take up a lot of your time with this, but just so you know, 37 towns have investigated the use of electronic voting tabulators in the last several years. 23 of those have an open town meeting. Of those, 33 are using it, two decided not to, and two towns are still investigating. So it seems as though this is a trend. It seems pretty clear what direction it's going in. And we had a discussion of this possibility at the Access to Town Meeting Committee meeting. And that group voted to support reopening the investigation into the use of electronic voting tabulators at town meeting as a way of speeding things up, making it take less of people's time, perhaps if we decide this is the right way to go, and making it therefore more attendable for many people. I'd really like to do it in a way that invites input from the community before we make any decision, any final decisions about it, that educates the community as to whatever our investigation reveals and that ultimately allows the community to decide if this is the right thing to do. So really just asking for your support on that. I'd, of course, like to have access to the information we already have and then try to gather some other information, especially that might have come about in the last couple of years when everybody's been doing things differently. And I suspect this is something that's also been done differently in the last couple of years.
Okay, thank you. Comments, questions from the board? John?
Yes, Angela, do you think this would be something to be part of the Access to Town Meeting Committees, assuming the names will be changed, part of their charter? Could they handle this or help?
Yeah, I think that I shouldn't speak for them. I see Diane Wood is here. She's the chair of that committee, and I really shouldn't speak for them. I'm not a member of the committee. I just attend, and they're very enthusiastic about anything that might increase attendance at town meeting. And they voted to support the idea of investigating this further. You know, I don't want to speak for them and say that they will help or won't, but I could certainly ask them that at their next meeting.
Okay. I mean, that might be something that Select Board wants to opinionate on, I guess.
We may. Other comments from the board? Anita, and then Tom?
I would definitely support the re-investigation of the clickers. I think we've learned a little bit from that first process and kind of like ways to potentially educate the community more about and give them more opportunities to learn more about the clickers. I'm not sure about the scope of the increasing attendance in Town Meeting Committee and whether or not this really falls under their scope because, to me, I was thinking more of like getting people to town meeting. I feel like adding clickers to that is a little bit of a stretch. But those are my thoughts. I still support the re-investigation of the clickers.
Tom?
Yeah, I'm on board as well and think it's a good thing. And we'll increase accuracy and speed things along. So looking forward to starting that back up.
Scott? Oops, Scott, I think you're unmuted.
Yeah, I know. I guess I just request if we do reopen it, which is, I think is a good idea. I know last time we managed to get some clickers on loan for a field test. I would request we do that again before we go making investments, make sure that it works better the second time around than the first time, which I think you probably would, but hate to presume anything.
Sure. And hang on one minute, Jody. And I concur with my fellow board members. I think I certainly support re-investigating this and, you know, learning more about what's happened over the last couple of years as well as educating the community. Jody?
Yes, so the firm that ultimately we selected was one out of three, I believe, I recall. And they would allow one free trial of their device, which we did at that town meeting. And my recollection, the cost to rent the devices, which is what we were recommending, was between $4,000 and $5,000. And we don't have that funding right now. So I just want to make sure everybody understands if we don't, if we're not able to secure a free trial from another vendor or that same one, we would probably not be able to bring it to March unless the FinCom gave us some funding for that. But we're happy to share our file, and I'm sure Patty and Mike are happy to help whatever group is going to start investigating this again. Now, we did spend at least six months, I think, working on that last time. Anyway.
Great, thank you. Mike Wells and Tom Barry, just so you know, I know you have your hand up, and I will get to you.
Thank you, Andrea. I just wanted to mention, point out, though, that there was nothing wrong with the test we did in terms of making it, I mean, I think one of the Select members said, "Make it work better." It worked faultlessly when we tested it. The decision to not accept it wasn't based on it not working properly. It was just the feeling that they didn't want that process in the meeting. That's all I wanted to say, really.
Okay, Scott?
Yeah, I think that was probably me that, well, I didn't mean machines. I meant the process. In the end, that town meeting did not, you know, find it to be a success. Now, there are lots of reasons for that, and one of those reasons was not the devices themselves. That worked fine, I would agree. I think it was more of a, perhaps a cultural or... The event of that day is opposed to anything else.
Angela, before I get to you, I'm going to get to Tom Barry so we can hear from him as well.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to back up what Angela has said, that there are three groups, work groups, set up in the Access to Town Meeting Committee. I'll use that instead of the long name. One of the work groups I am on, I'm the chair of that work group. It's called the Remote Participation. And in the Remote Participation, it's really all types of electronic devices that we are looking at. Obviously, it's going to be a lengthy process, but that group and the entire committee of the Access to Town Meeting Group strongly supports the use of the clickers. That's one way that residents will see that things are changing. And although remote access may be way down the road, it's just one small step towards that remote access participation. So I strongly support it, and the whole committee does.
Thank you, Tom. Angela, I'll go back to you.
Just to wrap it up, there are 10 or 11 studies that have been done at 10 or 11 different communities on the Mass Moderator site about this, whether or not to use clickers. So that's available to us. And I really think that public education is going to be key to this. I think that nobody likes change, especially to something as, you know, enshrined in history as town meeting. So it has to be made evident that there's a good reason for it in order for people to accept it. And I think that would be, that would be the job that needs to be done between now and whenever we use it or test it or whatever.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone. I think, Angela, I think you heard the sense of the board is that we support investigating this. So we will let you, and at least for now, the Access to Town Meeting Committee, start to gather information and investigate it. And then at some point, I suspect that we will come back to the board and to the community to start reporting on your investigation and your facts and your findings. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are at our 7:15 p.m. item, which is an update from the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee on their progress. There you are, Eric. You were here before, and you're back. So Eric Barber Mingo is co-chair of the DEI Committee along with Mamatha also is co-chair. I'm not sure which one of you is going to be presenting, but the floor is yours.
Yes, I think as a first step, we should get Mamtha promoted to a panelist. I believe I saw her on the attending, and there she is on the screen. Wonderful.
Yeah, thank you, Eric.
I'm going to let Mamtha jump right in.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Select Board. I think this was long waiting for the DEI Committee to come back and present our updates, what progress we have done, what accomplishments have been achieved, and what work is continuing to progress within the subcommittees. So what I want to do is first thank everyone, the subcommittees and Select Board, and everyone who charged us within, charged for us to lead this town. It's about a year since we are a group of DEI committee members. So I thought it's appropriate for us to also share these things. So next slide, please. You can jump to Slide 3 straight away. All right, as you know, we do have three subcommittees, the School and Education, Town Policy, and Community Outreach Subcommittee. The School and Education took a big project onto themselves to start building a family survey, to survey not just WPS school but also Nishaba families, to hear from them and understand what discrimination, what diversity, what things that they're facing. And so the committee came up with a bunch of questions, survey questions that the DEI Committee as a whole reviewed and approved just to reduce the overarching dependencies and reduce the duplication of work that WPS DEI is doing. They are collaborating with them. The Town School and Education Subcommittee is collaborating with the WPS DEI to make sure that they work together rather than having two different paths for the same topic. So it's an ongoing work. They have also presented to Dr. Chu and have got his support with the survey. So it's now a matter of figuring out how do we distribute it or how do we get this out to all the families and get feedback and collate the data. So that's a lot of work behind this from the committee. So they've really gone ahead and done a very good job getting this out there. Then our Town Policy Subcommittee has been discussing about the different hiring policies and how they could include diversity and inclusion, how DEI can be supportive to them. And they have a set of questions that were shared with the DEI Committee, approved, and was given to Pam Hicks. So they're continuously working with them. Besides that, we've also got requests from the Fire Department to see that we, as a DEI, how can we support posting all the open positions within our known community, within our town, and different ways to attract diversity and inclusion into the town. Recently, October 11th, the Town Policy Subcommittee did observe the Indigenous People Day. We had Tom be part of that celebrations at the Town Common. It was nice to hear the stories behind the Indigenous Day by Jenny, who has been leading this work. It was nice to hear stories from them, from Chris Sanders and other people who really talked through the different tribes and how, where they are and how they're progressing. So it was, it was very nice to see Tom be part of that and be supportive of those things. Community Outreach has done a lot of work on basically trying to set the pace of having communications either like social media or letters to any of the tragic events that have occurred. In the last one year, we have heard about Atlanta. So we took an proactive action to make sure that we publish those things even within our community. We also sent, since last year was a pandemic year, their WA graduates had nothing special. So we took the opportunity to send a note from the DEI Committee to them congratulating them. And as you have, a few months back, you did hear that Joe Diamond got your approval for the hate crime status. So as a whole, DEI Committee, we are committed to making this, you know, the whole committee work together and make sure that we are visible. What we are doing is we set up electronic inbox so that we could hear from the community as well to say, "Hey, what's going on? You can reach out to us." And Eric and me will be manning those emails that come to us and address it with the full DEI. We want to hear from them more and more. So we are trying to promote that within the community. And we are also in the process of developing a social media Facebook page, which, again, the Facebook page will be one directional. So we can post things, and we'll provide our email ID there to receive feedback. People can write to us with that email ID. We don't want to open the whole thing for a two-way communication to avoid any conflicts or chaos that can cause in the community. So these are all the accomplishments that the DEI Committee has achieved so far. And we can move to the next slide. And in progress, like I said, we're trying to figure out our distribution channel for the family survey. We are continuously trying to engage with the different committees in the town, again, brainstorming for future Indigenous Day as it says there. And then the Outreach Committee is really looking at, what can we do for the community? There is a big thought process of, hey, can we do something like an outreach event where we invite everybody? We have vendors, we have participants, we have clubs. Everybody come. We have a food event and invite everybody to this outreach community, outreach to the people. I think there's a lot more discussion we need to do over this and figure out how we can tie up with other, like the Kivani's and other organizations that have events. We're also trying to figure out the food inequalities that is going on within the community and provide them resources so that if they are running short of food, they can have the resources, go approach them, and get food within the community. So this is all ongoing progress. And as a full DEI, at some point, the DEI Committee thought we need a small set of people, we don't need to call it as a subcommittee, but a small set of people who can step in to address during tragic events or events that can be hurting to the community or even just responding to some media and so that we have this turnaround time faster than waiting for the one month. We meet only once a month as a whole DEI. So instead of waiting for the whole month, and if things happen between the two meetings, they would be empowered to do those kind of communication to the community, to the media, wherever it's required. So we are working on this to figure out the whole, the size of the team members who should be and what's the guidance that we need to give them. So I haven't seen a PR team within the town, but we thought this would be for a DEI Committee to come up with. As you know, the black face has been a big thing that this community has faced within the high schools. So the positive note on that is in the, last week, when the high school had their spirit rally, the students were asked to use gray and maroon color for face painting versus black. So that's an improvement. There was a letter we sent to the school committee and Dr. Chu, and we do see that there's good work done there based on our recommendation. We can move to the next slide before I come back to questions. One of the things we have noticed is when we formed, we were 22 people. In the due course, due to personal reasons or other things that are impacting, we had two volunteers step down. We have, we had received a few people who were interested in the position. We invited them into the meeting to listen in, and we then took the same step like how Select Board chose us, the same questionnaire, we sent it to them to fill it out. And then we would have reviewed it and selected two more volunteers to the team, but they didn't come back. So we continue to pursue. As we receive more and more, we'll continue to pursue and see if there's any volunteers who are interested joining the team. So this is in a nutshell. We wanted to give an update to the whole Select Board, and I'll open up the floor for any questions, anything you want to clarify.
Oh, thank you very much. Appreciate it, you know, appreciate your presentation very much. So Anita?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks to a bunch of different people. One is for Jody and Pam Hicks for really being involved in a lot of the conversations for Town and Policy Subcommittee. And I know Mamtha and Eric have been, have done a really great job with the leadership. It's like herding cats, and it's like boiling the ocean. So trying to move it forward and trying to get everyone in the same direction takes a lot of effort. And there's just a lot of discussions, a lot of ideas, very passionate people. So I just wanted to say thanks for all of your volunteer time for leading this committee, too.
Echoing Anita's thanks, sincerely thanks to Anita for her liaison role and Derek and Mamatha. Really excited to see some of the projects that you're working on. Really looking forward to inviting you when you're ready to come back and so we can all have a conversation about things like, you know, hiring practices, how can we increase the diversity of the recruiting pool? What can we do to make Westford, you know, a more welcoming place for staff, businesses, residents? So that's really exciting. And also looking forward to teaming up with you. Something that I know a number of us have been thinking about, or at least I've been thinking about, is asking Chief Meadows to come back at some point and give an update on, he gave us a great update recently, but asking him to come back and give an update on some of the great data that we talked about a little more than a year ago about, you know, traffic incidents rates and how he does reviews and under what circumstances there's different retraining options for people. So I hope we can, at some point, get that on the schedule and make sure that it's a good time for you, too, so we can all team up for that discussion. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. Everything that you've mentioned are things that are in process. And certainly, we've had substantive conversations around all of them. So yes, that will be central parts of future presentations.
Scott?
Yes, I would echo the thanks of my board members. I guess a couple of other thoughts. One is, I'm very glad to see the discussion around, you know, food security or insecurity. I suspect it's going to be getting worse before it gets better given the situation now into our food supply chain. Just encourage you to talk to our Town Food Bank people because they also are keeping track of that data. And I think, you know, they may be missing things that, you know, you manage the things they know. You coordinate with them, you might get a better outcome for the town as a whole. And then third, I know COVID really makes this difficult. But, you know, one of, I think there are sort of two avenues that I found very exciting. One was, you know, working with the town and on things like hiring practices and policies and so forth. But, you know, also the more informal thing of, of how do we get together as a community and celebrate our diversity? You know, we've had the past, you know, our Indian community has had celebrations on the common for their cultural events. And I've been invited to, you know, neighborhood picnics and learned, you know, amazing recipes for corn. Those things are great just to build relationships. And I know it's very hard now, but as hopefully things improve over the coming year, it'd be great to get some of those things back online where we can just, you know, apart from, you know, logistics, just how do we, as people, get together and have a good time?
Absolutely. So I have a question for you folks. You know, certainly, you know, looking at what you've done over the last few years is terrific and all of the hard work that you've put in and come up with. What, if anything, can we do to help you?
I let Eric answer first because I have something on my mind, but I let Eric answer first.
Yeah, one thing that jumped to my mind immediately, and it goes back to Anita's comment about herding cats. We certainly can use as many pieces of advice around the process for getting things done on a more formal basis. Meaning if there are specific expectations about, for instance, the things that we might need money for or things that we might need board approval for. If any reminders about what that process is and, you know, kind of egging us along to think in more formal ways is the kind of thing, is the kind of guidance that I think we're always looking for. So and to close that point, I think I'd love to, you know, just as a co-chair, I'd love to receive a lot more emails from any person on the Select Board. Like if you're sitting there and you have a random thought about, well, hey, what's DEI doing about this? What's DEI doing about that? You know, just to kind of populate our database of things that we can work on. Send us that input, you know, I think we, you know, we would enjoy having a lot more ideas just kind of thrown at us so that we can, we can increase our database of things that we know people are thinking about.
Okay.
I'll go next. I think one of the things that we challenged and I did notice when I went for the Indigenous Day is we are less visible, let me put it that way, we are less visible to many committees within the town. So what can we do or what can we explore? One of the things I talked to Tom, and I know it's probably done before within the town, is can we have like a fair or or just like an event where all the town committees, including DEI, stand there and present what they're doing because that will attract the whole community to know what Westford Town is doing for the whole community. That was something that I kind of thought would be a nice to have because that will give visibility not only to DEI, but I'm thinking holistically even to the other town committees that they're doing other good work across the town. So that is something, I don't know how to approach this, but I just thought I'll throw it out there for more visibility.
Sure, I'll respond in a minute, but go ahead, John.
Well, I think we could include that in another, you know, when we resurrected Strategic Meeting that we had at Campbell's, that'd be a good place to have an interchange about what all the committees do. Yeah, I'd like to echo what the rest of the members of the board said about the progress the DEI Committee has made. I think they've done a tremendous thing, outreach to the community and finding out just where we are and all these different issues that affect the community and the state at large. Just getting information on that. So I think hearing from the DEI Committee maybe more often. If you have some ideas for us or you're looking for some, you're here to advise us and what we do. And we're listening. I had one question concerning the the social media aspects of this. Is this Facebook account going to be an official social media account or on the, or posting?
Yes, we're going through the same social media policy that the town has and we will adhere to that.
Okay. And I think it also had a couple of these, just like to know where you're headed with some of these. For example, on the ethical language guidelines, where are you headed for that? And is it ethical or is there more to it than that?
Yeah, we're still working on that, so we will get back to you and just, once we have a recommendation of what the ethical language that we want to propose, we'll get back to you. We're still trying to figure that out. There's a lot of information onsite. And Omar, who's working diligently on that, wants to make sure that he has covered all his bases in his research to say, what was the best approach to get this ethical language recommendation to the town?
I've attended several of your meetings in the past and I applaud the way you handle things and keep going.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Scott.
Yeah, just to add to John's first thought about, you know, the Town Fijik Retreat, which we haven't had now, I think, for two years courtesy of COVID. So I know that we had issues with that being more expensive, I think, to put on in the future. But since we're at budget time, if we think we want to do that, maybe we should ask Jody if we can fit that, I think it goes into what the Select Board's budget. So if we think that's something to put back on the front burner next year, maybe we ask, we can put the budget process.
And Anita.
Yeah, I know this question was, your question Andrea was really for Eric and Momtha. But when it's coming to, when you're thinking about like ways that I think that's, I personally think that the Select Board could support DEI is really permeating the DEI issues across the other committees. So I think just in general, nothing targeted to you specifically Andrea, but I think sometimes the DEI Committee is seen as like the go-to, and I think we're kind of pigeonholed in diversity. Whereas this should really be kind of seen throughout. It's a town commitment to the issue of DEI. And the DEI Committee is a resource that's available to all the town departments, committees and families, community members. But I think it's kind of like, we could help provide that leadership of the town commitment to DEI, to, for example, housing, or if it's economic development, I'm just kind of making stuff up right now. And then they can then follow the steps to reach out to DEI if they need that support. And if not, then that's fine. But it's just kind of like, I think it's hard. I personally see, and I'm sure this applies to a lot of committees. I think it's hard where there being a resource to the town, but then also they're finding themselves as a resource to the community members. And even though it's a big committee, they're stretched in so many different directions. So it's hard to find that focus. And so I understand Eric's question about, you know, we need more like a formal process, but it's a formal process for working through the town. And then it's a formal process for being a resource to community members. So I think that it feels very much like it's boiling the ocean. And so that's why I feel like it's hard to feel like you're getting a lot of traction quickly when a lot of it is so much relationship building on both ends. Just want to share that.
Do anything. Scott and then John.
Yeah, just one other, you know, to piggyback on these comments. When we first formed the Christian on Disabilities, we have some, not quite as broad as your mandate, but certainly where do you start kind of of question? And we ended up asking in folks from Rec Department, from our, you know, town facilities, just to get a feel for what their issues were with disabilities, how we could help them out. So I'm not sure what you've done already in terms of inviting others in. I guess it's probably you've done some of that already, but by all means invite somebody from the Christian Disabilities, invite one from the Housing Trust. We'd be happy, I think, to be part of that conversation and, you know, discuss where we can work together to make things better for all of our, all of our interests.
John.
And your research and whatnot and outreach, if you see something or find something that's kind of urgent or you feel needs our attention right away, don't hesitate to get in touch with us.
Sure. Great, thank you, John. So let me add to this a couple of thoughts. First of all, you know, as John just said, anytime you want to come to the Select Board with a request, whether it's for money or I did. Whether it's for money, whether it's for input about an idea that you have, whether it's simply is, hey, we really need to get the word out about this. Can you get this out on, you know, at the, you know, can you make it part of the board meeting? Can you get it on Jody's? Get it into her monthly report and letter to the community, you know? Can you get it up on the town's website, you know? Just ask, okay? I mean, seriously, shoot Jody or I or, you know, anybody an email. And we're certainly happy to help you in any way and help, you know, you get the visibility that I think that you really are looking for and that you need. So certainly, yeah, we are, you know, we are certainly here to help you do that and get that out for you. I think, you know, if, like I said, if there's a resource you need, if there's, you know, something you want to do, if there's information you want to gather that we can help you with, please, you know, we're here and we're ready to do that on your behalf. So, you know, I think, you know, to Anita's point, yeah, we're both, you're building relationships with both the community at large as well as, you know, all of the other, you know, as well as within the town and within town departments. So, so, you know, as the quote, you know, executive management committee of the town, we're, you know, we're certainly here to help you do that. There is, based on what you said, there is just one point process-wise that I do want to make clear to you. Your committee members have to be appointed by the Select Board. So while you can go through the process, you know, and interview them and give them the questionnaire and then come up with a recommendation as to, you know, whom you would like to have appointed. You do have to bring it back to the Select Board so that we can appoint them, so it's all official. So I just want to make sure that you guys know that. Because I didn't, I didn't know if that was clear based on what you had said, okay?
No, that's clear, that's clear. We would have come back to you with the recommendation.
I just wanted to make sure about that. And maybe, and maybe the other way to help you with sort of with visibility is, you know, it has been about a year since you've been before us. And, you know, I recognize, and I'm not faulting you, I recognize and understand that, you know, a lot of time has gone into, you know, organization and figuring out who you were and what you were going to do and getting your committees together. But, you know, now that you've done that, I think, you know, having you come back more frequently will also help with your visibility and also will help get the word out of what you're doing and the resources that you can provide. So, so Tom.
Just to follow up on Andrea's point, to the extent sometimes running a committee, a deadline is helpful. If you do have, I mean, there's a bunch of great things you're already working on that I'd love to have a conversation about in this meeting, like, you know, diversity and recruiting and hiring, that's a fantastic topic. So I know that's very much on the Select Board's mind also. If you feel like you're ready or whenever you feel like you're ready, we'd love to have you come back. So if, to Andrea's point, if it's a two times a year or three times a year, if you want to pick a topic area, if that's a good way to organize, I mean, there's a great conversation there to have. We might want to ask the schools to participate too. So, you know, just, just a lot of enthusiasm, I think, from all of us and for me on some of these great things you've already picked. And if you feel like it's a helpful way to organize, when you feel like you're ready, you know, please, please ask for an agenda item. We'd love to center discussion on it.
Cool.
Thank you, John. Anita.
I think this is the most I've spoken during any of the other Select Board meetings. But basically, I just wanted to also, maybe the next time you're coming before the Select Board, we could invite the school committee or at least Ming Chen and the school committee liaisons. The school Subcommittee has worked very closely, as Momtha mentioned, with the WPS DEI team, which is really focused on diversity within the schools. And then we thought that the town's DI Subcommittee could help be the complement of reaching those family members outside of the school walls. So we could help connect to families outside of, you know, just extended to the community. And I think that's just been a really great of cross-pollinating meetings, having more people on the school committee participate in the DEI team and then end up participating in our meetings as well. So I think there's been really good partnership there.
And John.
I'm done, thanks.
Oh, okay. You didn't put your hand down, so I didn't realize that. Okay, well, thank you both for coming tonight. I also know that there are several members of your committee who are attendees, who are also on board and listening. And so thank you to all of you. Thank you for your hard work. And we look forward to hearing from you more frequently in the future. And as we've said, if you need anything, if you've got questions, if you're looking for resources, please just reach out to us and let us know.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Everybody have a good night.
All right, take care.
Okay, we are at our 7:35 PM item, which is a public hearing for a petition for a joint or identified poll location. Is there a motion to open the public hearing and waive reading?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so National Grid is not here tonight because they're a little busy with the storm that has hit us. So we are going to continue this public hearing to our meeting of November 9th at 7:35 PM. So this poll petition is continued until then. Okay, we're at our 7:40 PM item, which is another public hearing for a petition for a joint or identical poll location. And again, is there a motion to open the public hearing and waive reading of the notice?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. And again, National Grid is not here due to the storm, so we're going to continue this public hearing until our meeting of November 9th at 7:40 PM.
Excuse me, point of order.
Yeah.
Don't we have to vote to continue the meeting?
I don't think so. I think we can just continue it, yeah. Okay, now we are at our 7:45 PM item, which is a public hearing in connection with violation of Mass General laws, Chapter 138, Section 34, sale of alcohol beverages to persons under 21 years of age by Westford Market and Liquors at 6 Carlisle Road. All right. Hello, Lieutenant Pellequin. And Mr. Patel, you're here.
Yeah, I'm here, yes.
Okay. So why don't you start, okay, Lieutenant Pellequin?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Yeah, we had two liquor law violations in a short timeframe at the Western Market Liquors at 6 Carlisle Road in a short timeframe. Different circumstances on both, so I can kind of go through the facts and circumstances of each. Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so the first one was on Thursday, September 23rd. Approximately 8:30, we had an officer conducting surveillance in the area. He was cognizant of liquor law violations and was looking out for that at the time. Approximately 8:30, the officer noticed the lone employee come outside the main door and look around the parking lot. This employee repeated that act three to four times. And a short time later, the employee walked out with a red, excuse me, a red box that was consistent with numerous other transactions that had just occurred while the officer was watching. His employee put that red box into a motor vehicle in the rear passenger door and walked back into the store. After that occurred, the officer was able to run the plate of the vehicle, obtain a license picture and was able to identify that person as the employee and also identified the employee as being 20 years old. And then within the hour that employee was closing up the store and was going over to his car, which had been sitting parked for the evening, nobody else around it. So at that point, to intervene prior to potentially this individual operating the motor vehicle with the alcohol, he walked over. He asked the employee how old he was. He said he was 20 years old. The officer was able to look right inside the vehicle and see that he had alcoholic beverages, it was two 12 packs of hard seltzer. And the employee turned over the alcohol to the officer. And then the officer interviewed him. He had asked him if he had purchased it. He stated he had for $41. He said that this was the third time he had purchased alcohol from the store. And he had been employed roughly two months. So the employee knew we shouldn't have been doing it and employed roughly two months. So the employee knew we shouldn't have been doing it and, you know, just basically got caught. So, uh, the next day, the officer did follow up with the owner of the store. Um, at that time, um, identified it as Mr. Patel. Um, at that time, he was aware of it. This was about less than 24 hours later. He, he was made aware of it by the employee. Uh, Mr. Patel advised the officer that he had told this employee that he was not to purchase any alcohol beverages because of his age and shouldn't have been doing that. Um, and then the officer advised him of the circumstances of up to three purchases that he admitted to. And, uh, Mr. Patel was going to go back and look in the receipt system. Uh, there was also no video surveillance either. So, uh, but at that time, we weren't sure if Mr. Patel had been able to, uh, bring up the receipts and identify those purchases.
So, yeah, he did, uh, like I said, like I, I looked back into the system. He did purchase the, the one you were saying, you know, the hard searches. And, I mean, I let him go because as soon as I know, you know, I, I didn't keep him. But, yeah, I already told him, you know, when he started, like, you're underage, you know, you shouldn't be doing anything. You can, you're allowed to work, but you cannot, like, take alcohol with you.
You're on mute, Andrew.
And the second incident?
Okay, yeah, the second incident, uh, was exactly two weeks later on Wednesday, October 6th. Um, this was approximately 7:30 PM. Uh, once again, an officer was in the area conducting surveillance. And, um, around that time of 7:30, a vehicle had caught this particular officer's eye. Um, the vehicle parked well away from the front door, um, with multiple open spaces between that car and the front door. And, uh, female party had exited the passenger seat, walked over, um, inside to the liquor store, and a male party who was on a cell phone was inside the vehicle. Um, again, the officer is kind of doing some investigative work, uh, while she was in the store. Um, he was able to run the plate, identified a couple male parties that, um, were also in that family that were minors under 21 years old, uh, that potentially could have been the driver. A short time later, the female exited the store with a brown paper bag with some sort of package. Um, he wasn't able to identify exactly what was in it at that time, but he did make the observation, believing that the female was 18 or 19 years old. Um, they left the parking lot a short time later. Uh, the officer was able to make a motor vehicle stop on a, a separate civil, uh, motor vehicle violation, identified the operator as a 17 year old male and, um, the passenger as an 18 year old female. Um, at that time, the off, the officer was able to make observations inside the vehicle and inside the brown paper bag, uh, that there were alcoholic beverages inside. Um, this time, it was also a six pack of hard seltzer, uh, 10 whiskey nips and three, uh, 50 milliliter small, uh, individual vodka bottles. Um, the 18 year old female admitted that she had purchased it inside. He had asked if she used a fake ID or, or whatever. And she stated that, uh, she did not present an identification. And, um, when asked more, she said she had purchased alcohol at the store three to four times within the last couple of months. Um, and also from multiple employees during those occasions. Um, again, the officer took the, seized the alcohol, and did a follow up. This time, Mr. Patel was working. Um, the officer went back in there immediately after the, the motor vehicle stopped. Uh, he had asked her, he had, excuse me, he had asked Mr. Patel if he remembered the, uh, transaction. And, um, at first, he didn't. When he explained the type of alcoholic beverages and the physical description of the female, he did recall. And the officer let him know at that time that she was only 18 years old. Um, Mr. Patel stated that he thought she'd been in there before and thought she had used an identification card and that she, he only looked quick, um, at her license and just saw his date of birth, which he took to believe was, you know, the day and month of the year, but didn't look at the actual year of birth. Um, so the officer advised him of, um, you know, he should have checked the identification of the female party.
Yeah, so, I guess, so I don't have two, three employees. I only had one employee that scared it. I guess so. Maybe they were like, uh, she, she never buy from me. That was the first time, I guess. So that's what she told, like, like she never bought from me. So I think it's, maybe she was friends with the employee and that's how she was getting it. But, like I said, they are not working anymore here. So, and, yeah, I did ask the ID and I, that's my mistake. I checked the date of birth and, like, she was holding a high D and I checked it. So, and I thought it was good, but it was my mistake.
Okay. All right. Um, comments from the board and Scott?
Actually, a question first, I guess, you know, I, I-
Questions and comments, yes.
I guess, I guess ignorance, Lieutenant, but whoever I've bought alcohol, say, at a grocery store where there were underage staff, they will not check me out. They bring in a person of age to run it through the scanner. So can you sell alcohol?
That was my question.
Under 21?
Yeah, if you're 18, you can. And then, a lot of times, you'll see it, like, you know, market basket, if someone's cashier 16 or something, they'll, they'll have somebody who's of age to, to bring it in.
Okay, thanks.
Tom?
Uh, this question for Mr. Patel. So you've had two pretty serious incidents in a pretty short period of time. What, uh, what training or processes have you put in place to make sure this doesn't happen again?
So right now, there's no employee and I have the state certificate already for, like, long time. And then I'm buying a scanner for, to check the IDs too. So, you know, if anyone comes in for their fake ID, so I can, you know, catch it right away and then get the ID with me and then give it to the police or the town. You know, this is all fake IDs. Yeah. So that's what implementing I'm doing. And then, yeah, there is no, and so after I, like, fire my employee, I've been, like, staying all day, like, open to close. So I've been saying, like, you know, every day, like, whatever time he was working, I saw that, you know, two, three people comes, but then I was sending them home, you know, like, when I asked my ID, they didn't have an ID or something, you know? So.
Okay.
So right now, yeah, yeah.
Did you yourself go through any training? Because it sounds like at least once, it seems like-
Yeah, I do. I, I do have a certificate.
Properly inspect the ID.
Yeah, I do have a certificate too. Yeah, I did went to the training, yeah.
Since, since this happened?
Uh, no, it's from last November, I went to the training, yeah.
So, so Tommy, Tom, you and I are on the same page, I think, uh, about, uh, trainings. So, so Mr. Patel, you, you have been opened almost a year, not quite a year.
Yeah.
And you have had, within the span of two weeks, two, as Tom said, serious violations.
Yeah.
And, um, under our, our, under the town's regulations, um, and I would consider this two vi, uh, not just one offense, I would consider it two offenses. And under the town's, uh, regulations, um, for a second offense, uh, even though we did not, um, uh, impose any penalty for the first offense, because it just, the two of them happened so quickly, um, is a five day suspension, um, of your business. Um, so there's that. And also, um, to be quite frank, um, I, um, I would want you and any employee, uh, to go through retraining and any employee that you are hiring also to be going through training and that, um, the certificates of your retraining and your employees', um, training, uh, be, uh, presented, um, uh, to Lieutenant Pellequin, um, uh, as confirmation that, uh, you have done that, um, and you're doing that. And, um, uh, that, at least for the board's consideration, would be my recommendation.
Yes, I'm gonna go to the training. I mean, right now, I don't have any employee, but whatever employee comes-
Well, since we're gonna suspend your business for five days, you're gonna have five days and one of those, you probably can go for training.
Yeah. But I, I think the first offense was like, uh, what happened was like, at the same time, you know, my camera was not working at that time. So I couldn't like, no. But then as soon as I know the call, I mean, the officer told me, you know, I just got rid of him, you know? So.
Scott?
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest that if you've got employees, uh, especially those who are themselves underage, you may have friends who are underage. I would really want a camera in there. It sounds like you do have one, it just wasn't working, but-
No, I, I do have camera, yeah.
It seems to be these days basic precaution. And I guess my other concern would be, we've got, you know, two serious infractions close together and reason to believe from Lieutenant Pellequin's testimony that there's been other occasions that could have been there but weren't, you know, um, uh, I guess evidence was, was, was able to be obtained. So it sounds like there's a real issue here. Um, and the word gets run amongst, you know, minors, that if there's a easy spot to buy this, they will go back there, others will go there. So, um, yeah, I, I think this is, you know, pretty serious. Also, you went that far for 45. I mean, it's, this is the kind of case where you're a good location for minors to, um, to give advantage of a situation. So this, this, this is, to me, very, very serious.
Anita?
Um, yeah, you know, I just want to say that I, I understand, like, owning a small business and running it by yourself is a lot of long hours and you don't have any employees. So that's really tough on you. But, um, I do agree that I would consider this two offenses as well, especially because one of those was yours, right? And so I think that going through retraining again, and then also making sure your employees are really in tip top shape of training is really critical, because this is your license in the end, right? They're, they're an extension of you. And if there's any violations, that comes back to your business, your money for your family. So I, um, would really kind of echo the seriousness of these offenses. And, um, I would also support the, the five day suspension.
Okay, John?
Yeah, I support it as well. I think it's very serious and he needs to really, uh, focus on this 100% ID check. I mean, there's no real excuse for that. So I agree with the, uh, five day suspension and the retraining.
Okay. So, Mr. Patel, while we don't want to put you out of business, um, and we are certainly willing to work with you in terms of, um, uh, scheduling, um, the five days in which your business will be closed, um, if, if you would like to, um, take a moment, or a few minutes to, uh, consider what days you'd like, uh, to close your business, uh, what, which five days, we will certainly, we are certainly willing to work with you on that. Scott?
Okay.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, just, normally for a first offense, we let you pick a Monday, you know, because it's, it's a first offense. Usually with, I mean, tricky for all, uh, Andrea, but with second offense, we usually say, ask to be a more meaningful, you know, a Thursday, Friday or a Saturday, at least for a couple of the days.
I think we have, uh, we've asked for at least a little bit more meaningful. So yes, I think that it's fair to say that at least, um, a couple of the, uh, two of the days need to be, uh, um, I would, you know, a, probably a Thursday, Friday or Saturday, which I consider to be the more meaningful days. Um, although I don't know, you, you guys, maybe I should ask Lieutenant Pellequin as to, uh, which days are more meaningful. I don't know, maybe Sunday afternoons are meaningful, be, you know, uh, but, um, I'm not sure. Certainly Friday or Saturday, I would think. Uh, Lieutenant, do you have anything? Do, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I, I mean, definitely we see the busier days, you know, on the weekends for sure with, uh, social events, family gatherings, et cetera. So I would definitely concur that, um, the weekends are definitely busier.
Okay. So, Mr. Patel?
Yes, yes.
Um, do you want to, uh, think about what days you would like, uh, or you would ask us, uh, you know, you would, um, that you would submit to us that you will close your business?
Yeah, so, uh, it has to be like straight five days or?
No, it does, it doesn't have to be a straight five days. Um, but they should include, let, let us say, it should include one Friday and one Saturday.
Okay. And then the three, the rest other days?
Right.
Okay. So should I, like, email you back, like, to town or I just tell you guys right now what days today close?
Um, we prefer you to tell us tonight.
Yes, tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
If you want to, we, we can, um, we have a few other things to do. If you want to take, if you'd like us, what I will do is, why don't we do a few other things on our agenda and then we can come back to you. And that'll give you a little bit of time to figure out what days you'd like to suggest.
Okay. Sure. Thank you.
All right. So, um, we'll leave the public hearing open, uh, for this right now to, because we're going to come back to it. Um, all right, let's go to our, um, 8 PM item, which is our consent agenda. And, uh, we have a request to approve a Pops concert on, uh, Town Common. The applicant is Peter Stickel. It's for, uh, Friday, July 1st, 2022, and the time is from 6 to 9 PM. Um, is there a motion to approve? Um, Mr. Stickel, do you want to say anything? This is usually, you know, consent agenda and we usually,
Sure.
You know, go right ahead and approve it. But if you'd like to say something and, and promote your, um, event, please feel free to do so.
Sure. And I'm, I'm struggling with the video. I was on a, a second ago and I, I disappeared. So I'm not sure what I need to do to, to be, but, oh, there.
There you are.
There you were.
We, we are musicians who migrated out to this, uh, northwest middlesex area in the last 10 years or so and, and love it. And we feel like we wanted, we want to serve it with, uh, uh, some string quartet arrangements that comprise a, uh, a multi-generational sort of approach to music that we think, uh, young people and old, older people and people in the middle will like. And, um, two of our members are regular teachers at the Westford Suzuki School. And one of our members is the founder of a, of a store called Bridges and Bowes. It's a string instrument store also in Westford. And, um, so we, we're planning to do that next summer and we'd love to do one in Westford. We feel like we're kind of getting back in the saddle a little bit as musicians who are kicked, kicked out of our groove, you know, for about a year and a half. So, uh, it's just something we'd like to offer to the community.
Great. Well, we very much appreciate it. Um, so is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
One second? Okay. Um, all those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you next July 1st. Oops, now you're on mute.
Could I just say, it's been a privilege to be, to, to be in this meeting and to, you know, you're all really wonderful. Makes me wish I lived in Westford. You, you, you do great things for this town. It's, it's, it was pretty terrific. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You're welcome to move here, Peter.
Okay, um, let me go back to Mr. Patel and see if he has, um, uh, determined what days he would like to close.
Yes, uh, yeah, so I decided the dates that maybe this Sunday, the 31st.
Okay.
Then the Friday, the 5th.
Okay.
And then the 8th November, it's gonna be on Monday. And then it's gonna be 13th November, that's gonna be Saturday. And then 15th November, Monday is that.
Okay.
Hopefully, guys.
Anybody have any objection to those dates? Okay, seen none? So seen none, um, the, the board is, um, going to, um, issue a five day suspension. And that suspension will be served on, on which your businesses will, business will be closed, will be served on Sunday, October 31st. And that suspension will be served on, on which your businesses will, business will be closed, will be served on Sunday, October 31st, Friday, November 5th, Monday, November 8th, Saturday, November 13th, and Monday, November 15th. In addition, um, you, um, will attend retraining and obtain a certificate for that. And, um, uh, why don't we give you a deadline of November 30th to obtain that certificate?
Okay.
And also, um, any of your employees also need to go through training and present a certificate that they have done that training as well. And I believe that you indicated you do have a camera in your, uh, in your business. And so I would just say that you need to make sure that your camera is functioning at all times.
Okay, so I don't have the employee right now, but if I have the employee in the future, should I give you the training certificates to the town or?
Yes, um, I think we'd like you to have, give the training certificate and you can give it to Lieutenant Pellequin.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
And I think, as you know, the, the board does consider this serious and hope that, as do you, we hope. And honestly, hope not to see you here again for these reasons. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, we're at our eight oh five PM item, which is a request to approve the 2020 represencing plan for the town of Westford. Jody?
I think you should take a vote of what motion, I mean, if you want someone to make a motion, I don't think they have to reread it. But I think that should be a vote of the board.
Okay, so can I, can I have a motion to approve what we just, the, the penalties that we just imposed? Thank you. Is there a second? All those in favor, Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi, and that also reminds me, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm moved, second.
Um, all those in favor, Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, thank you, Jody. Okay, Patty, you're up. Tell us about represencing.
Hello, hi.
Hello.
Oh, look at what Eric's done for me. Okay, well, I'll make it brief because you got the long version. So basically every 10 years, the federal census is taken. With either an increase or decrease in population, inevitably the precinct lines change. In our case, Westford's population increased to 24,643 people from 21,951, which was in 2010, a difference of 20, about 2,700 residents. This increase results in an added precinct. So instead of six precincts, we now have seven. Precincts can only have 4,000 residents. That's not voters, that's actual residents within that precinct. Working with the Secretary of State's office, the GIS coordinator, Chris Koutou, land use director, Jeff Morissette, and the Board of Registros over the past several months, we have met and come up with what we best, what we feel best fits the state guidelines and will work the best for the town, given the requirements we need to follow. So I am submitting the updated precinct map, which I think Eric's got in there somewhere too, which I am hoping that you approve because the state wants it approved by October 30th. It was a real hurry up and wait because of the pandemic and then suddenly everything comes to a head. But we've done the best we can. I've given you the long version in your package, so if you have questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. There was a lot of information there.
So, so Patty, I have a question for you.
Okay.
So with the redistricting and, um, you know, people being moved, you know, from precinct to precinct, does, and I forget, because it's been 10 years. Will the town clerk's office send notice to folks about their new precincts and where they will be voting? And that leads to the second question, which is where is precinct seven going to be voting?
Well, glad you asked. So it's my plan to have these things done in time for this, when we send the census out. Because on the census, it will tell you where you vote and that you're a voter. However, by law, I do need to send it to every single person whose precinct changed. We sort of kept that in mind when we were devising how we split them up to try and change the least amount of people that we can, although obviously we have a whole new precinct, so that's going to change. I mean, we're talking about probably a third of the voters are going to see a bit of a change. I have decided to get some input from some people in the know. I sort of have a working group put together. I don't even sort of have one. I have a working group put together that consists of me, Andy Sherman, one of the registrars, Gina Donahue. I'm asked Lynn Cohen and Paul Murray, who are wardens, to help me out with some logistic questions. I have Pat Rapucci from the Commission on Disability, because we had gone over the precinct places as they are currently. So we're thinking of looking at them all, as long as we have to find another space for somewhere. We're going to look at all the precincts and see what works. And I also have Chris Sanders, the chairman of the school committee, because as you know, we do use schools. So I wanted to make sure it worked for them. Everybody comes at it from a different direction. Maybe Andy and I would love to put them all in one school, but, you know, the school department's going to tell me, oh, you're going to possibly do that? Or someone's going to say, we can't have all those people there, there's not enough parking. There's lots of things to consider, so I need some input.
Okay.
So I don't know where precinct seven is.
I was gonna say, so long way of saying you're not sure where precinct seven is going to be, but everybody is going.
I'm thinking it could be the avid school. I'm thinking of putting three of them in there, but we'll see how it goes.
But everybody in town is going to get notice of, of where they will be voting. And when does this go into, when does represencing go into effect?
These precincts are in effect as of the new year, January 1st. Our first election isn't until May, so we do have some time to get it together. But I need to tell the state where they're going to be.
Okay. Okay, um, other questions from the board?
Okay.
Looks good.
I don't see any, and I don't see any from our audience. So we need a motion to approve the represencing as presented by our town clerk tonight.
I'm moved.
Jagger?
Okay, um, all those in favor, Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, Patty, and to your, and to your, uh, uh, working group for all the hard work you've done on this. I am sure this is not an easy task.
No, I just thank Chris Koutou every day of my life because it's, it's, it's really a GIS thing. So he's been great, as well as Jeff Morissette, telling me where the new, the new projects are coming. So we have 10 years of it. So thank you very much, everyone.
Anita, Jefferson?
Do we need to come in to sign that or could we use electronic signatures?
I think I can get by with electronic. I'm going to double check tomorrow. I'll let you know if I can't, but I think the electronic signatures will work out fine.
Thanks.
Thank you for asking.
All right. Okay, old and new business. Our first item is consider implementing a new requirement for general law, chapter 138, section 15, alcohol package store license and wine and malt package store license applicants to complete beverage alcohol training, techniques of alcohol management training, or training for intervention procedures in order to obtain local license approval. Jody?
So if you remember a couple of weeks ago, or maybe a little longer, you asked us to look at what new training requirements you could impose. So the police have been working on this and Lieutenant Pellequin is going to speak to their recommendations tonight.
Okay, Lieutenant Pellequin, it's all yours again.
Again, thank you. Yeah, I was speaking with Captain Pick, who started looking into some of this stuff. And also Andy Sherman over in the town clerk's office and really kind of dug into this. And basically, we all came to the same conclusion that absolutely one of those, at the very least, you feel one of those three that are listed on the agenda for training should absolutely be. Every employee, manager, owner should have at least one of those. I think Mr. Patel had mentioned that tips training for these places that sell alcohol would be considered off campus and they can get that very accessible. It's online, I believe it's $40 fee. And then the Bats one is put on by the Massachusetts Package Store Association, typically in person in the fall or in the spring. So obviously there would be limitations to, you know, if a, if a employee just got hired in, you know, this time of year, but there wasn't any training till the spring, you know, certainly wouldn't be feasible to get that employee up and running immediately. And then the TAM is also another really good training. And there's, there's just a really good overlap of everything from preventing sales to intoxicated persons. What's the dynamics, even if they're not driving, they shouldn't be selling it to someone who's intoxicated anyway? Do they knew, do they know that? Do they know the six forms of identification? That is acceptable. You know, out of state licenses, it's best practice to get a, another form of ID. It should be checking IDs on anyone who looks under 30 and checking every time. If, if they have a fake ID or something like that, maybe it got confiscated, maybe it's expired. So there's so many dynamics that can come up in the sale. And as we've seen in the examples tonight and the alcohol violation we had a couple of months back, which resulted in a car crash with some juveniles. We really want to prevent all this stuff and the education is, is really important with that. I would just say on top of that, we've been putting together a lot of this information, the laws, and whatever our officers is actually going around to all the 12 convenience store liquor stores that sell alcohol to pass on, along to this information as well as training opportunities. But yes, absolutely, you feel every employee who's, has the, you know, the power to sell alcohol across the counter, that they should have at least one of these trainings.
Okay, and, and I think that the other thing we asked and we questioned is whether we should be requiring our package stores to have scanners to scan for fake IDs. And have, have you guys looked into that? I think you guys have looked into that based on what I saw in our packages. So could you just speak to that a bit?
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be in favor of making that mandatory. They, they certainly are a tool. I know Mr. Patel had mentioned getting one. The, unfortunately, the technology of some of these fake IDs, they could actually go into a scanner and pass. So that could be, you know, a false sense of security. Also, with technological advances, unless someone's keeping up with the software and data, they could be obsolete in as early as six months. So it's, it's an optional tool, but it wouldn't be one that we recommend as being mandatory.
Okay, thank you. Comments or questions from the board? Scott?
This is just a question. So I mean, would it be reasonable, advisable to suggest that the employee needs to have one of these trainings, but the owner should have two or three?
Yes, Scott, I think that's a great point. And I believe that that's one is, is more geared towards the owner as well as the, the TAM training is probably another level up that probably they should have. Again, it's just the feasibility of the timing of it is, is my only concern about having it in hand immediately when somebody opens up or anything like that. But I do agree with you that the owner should have that. And they should be, they should know the laws better than they do too. And they could potentially have some of them posted. And, you know, there's some good options out there that that training would help.
Anita?
I have a couple of logistical questions or like maybe process. So these are all trainings that are offered by the state? Is that right or?
Yeah, well, they, within the state, I guess in the Massachusetts Package Stores Association, there's other ones online, driver's license guide. The ABCC also does online advisory stuff that's accessible online. You know, so there's different ones that could pop up. I did see in one of, one of the sample policies, they kind of put that under programs available. Any insurance industry approved a qualified program offered by a certified trainer that's approved by the board. So something like, some language like that might be able to give you some good flexibility for others that pop up.
And I, I know you said that there might be some like timing questions about whether or not the, the training would be completed in time for the license. Could you elaborate a little bit more on that? Like, does it, what, how long would it take for the training to be completed and then to get the, like the certificate? Is there a big time period between those?
Yeah, so there's kind of a wide range on that. So tips, for example, is online. So you, you know, you could get a new hire. That person could go on online and complete that training almost immediately and get that in their hands so they have something. The TAM training, I believe, is three hours. That's accessible too. But the Bats training, beverage alcohol training put on by the Package Store Association, the information we have on that is it's held twice a year. And, and that one, I think, you know, like Scott said, might be more advisable for an owner or manager.
Okay, thanks, or all of your research into this and the whole team that you were working with. I have one last question. Would we want any training to be retaken every couple of years or?
I believe most of them are good for three years. I believe every single one of them that I saw was three years. Maybe I'm missing one, but I'm pretty sure it's, they're all three years.
Okay, thanks.
Lieutenant, do we, do they have to submit their certificate? I mean, I know we just had, told Mr. Patel that he's going to need to submit his certificate to you. But do we have a, a policy here in town that owners have to submit copies of their certificates to the town? And, and Jody, are you raising your hand because you're going to answer that question?
Yes, I'm happy to, so.
And Patty's nodding her head.
Well, so the select board, as you know, are or is the licensing authority for these liquor licenses. So the police enforce the laws, but you are in charge of the liquor license. So annually, you remember, you do renew these. If you decide to vote a new policy that will apply to all of them, we can notify them. And we will, we cannot release the license until they bring us their certificates. But it, I, I, it's fine that Mr. Patel is bringing it to Jim, but it's probably better if we control that. Patty, Patty is our special assistant with the licensing. It'd be better if we just keep these right in their alcohol file. So whatever you decide to vote, we will notify. If it's only on new licenses, then we will let them know. Because as you know, with a new license, it takes, it goes to the state after you. So it takes sometimes several months. But we do have time if you want to issue a new policy that they need to do this before they pick up their next license. But we need to get that out quickly.
Thoughts from the board about, uh, having folks do that? Scott?
Hey, I guess, so my, my thinking was, as you may have guessed, that we'd have all employees take the, the tip classes as required. And then my thought was that the owners would take, I think, all, all three. But given the, you know, twice a year nature of, of the bat. Can we, can we, you know, some apply for license today, they, they can't take that class because usually for six months. Can we make it that they have to have the class within a year? I mean, I don't know how, how that would work with licensing though.
Yeah, I mean.
I guess I'm asking Jody or Patty how that would work.
Well, yeah, so that would be, that would be a delay for a business. Wait a minute. So now I'm, now I'm getting myself confused.
What Scott's saying is, is that if we require an owner to take all three training courses, but given the fact that the bat course is only offered twice a year, that we say that, you know, they basically got a year to take all three courses.
Yeah.
And that's something that is doable.
But you mean not hold up their license, just get issued. Yeah, you could do that. And then if they don't comply, you could consider whether, you know, to suspend their license or something.
Yeah, I would, I would not want to have to wait six months to open a business because of.
Right.
Us, right? Yeah, they do need to make it, get it done sometime the next year. And because it could be the weekend that's offered is someone's wedding, right? So I want to give them a year, not to six months.
And, and the other thing I guess is, are we requiring, are we going, are we just doing this for new owners and new licenses? Or, or are we also going to require all of our current owners to do this? Jody?
All right, Anita. So we don't have any more of these licenses, as I think you know. And so the newest one was Karma that went to town meeting to get another license. So this doesn't happen very often in terms of new licenses. It's more, you know, whether you want to force the people that have them already to comply with this too.
Anita?
I guess I don't know what everyone else thinks, but I would actually favor having everyone go back and take a training or two. Because I know that the two public hearings that we've had on these offenses have been fairly new owners. But if Lieutenant Pellequin was saying that their, the technology for like fake IDs has been, moves really fast, then maybe like an owner who's had a license for a long time isn't up to speed on what those new technologies are, or what those new fake IDs might look like, or how to kind of catch those. So I don't think, I personally don't think it would hurt to add that to any, you know, to our old owner holders, license holders.
I don't think it would hurt to add it either, although I don't know that we need to make them take all three courses. You know, in terms of retraining, I, you know, I, I think that's a little burdensome personally. Tom?
So it, it sounds like there's a consensus motion emerging here, which is, I think Jody and Patty, I think it'd be as a term for renewal, as a requirement for renewal of the license, right? That's the way we'd enforce it. So is it, is required for renewal of any license in the town of Westford? All employees need to have one of these forms of certification. And the, whoever's acting as the general manager is required to have, you know, two of the three. Is that the consensus?
Sure. John had his hand up and then Jody, I'll go back to you, okay? I'm not sure that's the consensus. Tom?
It almost sounds like it's too complex for us to kind of put together here on the fly. You know, maybe it's to be current in, in this training. If this training is for three years, then they should be current upon renewal and when they renew their license. And if we say it's good for three years, as long as they're current in that training, then they could get the license. Not that they have to be retrained every, every time they apply for a license. And then I think it'd be better if we just decided at what level it would be required. Who has to take the bat and actually have it enumerated there that the owner has to have this and the employees have to have another one. I'm just concerned by saying laying it on them and then they can't get the train for six months. And we, we have to put in there, wait and get it within six months. I just think being currently training and then make sure their employees are trained within, I'd say, a week of employment or before their employment. And I just, I'm concerned about voting on it now without, without the details.
Jody?
So what I was going to say is, I, I don't know if you also want to include new licenses, Tom, in your motion, because you said renewals, but there will be. That's just a friendly suggestion. And then the second thing is, if you want to implement this before this license renewal, January 1st, you really do need to vote that soon because we have to get those letters out. And I guess if you're giving them a year, they'll still be able to renew. But, you know, the clock is ticking on, on their renewals.
Tom?
So I did mean, thanks for, thanks for all the help. So I was thinking it'd be for new licenses or at the time of renewal. And John, to your point, I was thinking that, that all employees would need to be current, so not retaking every year. And, and that the owner, whoever's acting as general manager would have two of the three. And at the time of renewal, they would have a six month window to, to get the, the second one. If, if, if most of them are available online, but one of them requires them to wait, then we could say the owner manager would need to have, you know, within six months, we'd have to have one at the time of renewal or new license, six months to make sure they had both two.
Jody, I hear you that we need to do this, you know, as soon as possible, given the renewals, January 1st. I guess. I'm concerned that we're doing this and that we may not be thinking of unintended consequences that may happen in, in passing, in, in doing this tonight, that none of us have thought about, to be honest. And so while I certainly understand that time is of the essence, I'm, I'm not comfortable voting this in tonight without sort of seeing it written out and then thinking about what, if, if we've, if we're not missing something and if we're not setting us up for some unintended consequences. So that's, that's where I'm coming from right now. John?
Yeah, I think, I think we, I'd like to see something that kind of lays out a, an option for it in our next meeting. In other words, for renewal, for the new licenses, what kind of trains required, who needs it? What, what is the window for their training? Do they have to be current in these, in this training? And it's more than just one paragraph or something. I think it's a, I think it needs a little bit more detail so we can vote on it. And I would hope that Jody and, and Town Clerk could come up with some kind of a reasonable proposal for that. Of course, along with the lieutenant, as to what we should be looking at. I'd feel much more comfortable if we had something like that to vote on next time.
Patty, let me go to you and then Anita and Scott.
Okay, I, I am, we are doing the renewals now. Andy does most of this now. I've kind of passed it off. But I do, I do know what's going on. Most of the restaurants are TIPS certified. They all know that, especially the chains in town. I mean, this is just, this is just procedure. That's operating procedure. And we get copies of those. The package stores are something new that we could incorporate. When we send out the renewals, they need other stuff. They need to show us that they have insurance, workman's comp. There's a couple of other things that they were all, used car license needs to show they got a $25,000 bond. So this is something we can incorporate with renewals. But even if you wait and think about it and get it done in November, we can let them know and say, this is just a suggestion, you know, this is what we need to have done and you need to have this done by, I don't know, March 1st. This is new procedure, but because it's, the timing is now, we're giving you 90 days to get it done. I mean, you know, what I'm saying. So I think it can be done. We, it's not like we're the city of Boston where there's 100 places. There's 40 places, you know, and we can handle it. So we can, we actually know the people usually when they come in who it is. It's, we're still a small town in many ways, so we could get that done.
Thank you. And I guess I wondered also for consideration, you know, are we talking about requiring this for restaurants? All restaurants? Are we talking about just requiring it for, you know, package stores? You know, I think we need to consider that too as well. Anita?
That was a great suggestion, Patty, of, of giving them a timeline sort of after January. And I was thinking about how Lieutenant Pellequin was saying they're going around to all of the package stores and just kind of letting people know that these trainings are available. I think if you add some language of, hey, there's been a couple of public hearings for our offenses. Make sure you're up to date on this and make sure your employees are up to date. That kind of helps reinforce any future training messaging that's going to be coming or give them a warning. And so we have that to also supplement our actions.
Scott?
So there's two things. One was, I think, when I, when I mentioned this, you know, originally, it was the context of package stores, because we've got, my, I think, eight years of the board. We've had one case, a restaurant serving a minor. It's almost always been package stores. But to be fair, you know, it could happen any place. You may as well have a policy that works for, for everybody. So the point two, as I was gonna say, I think this, because that's to take it off the, off the, to the calendar for tonight to decide and put it back in November. So I'd be happy to work with Lieutenant Jody and Patty to get together a policy for us to vote up or down or modify. And whatever you want, two weeks, four weeks.
Great. That would be terrific. I would say let's, let's, let's put it on for our next meeting, November 9th. But if you folks aren't ready by then and you need to, a little bit more time, that's fine. No worries. But I think that makes sense. So we can make sure that we have, you know, a policy that makes sense, that's reasonable and that we all understand. Emily Teller has her hand up. She probably thinks that I haven't seen her, but I do. So Emily, do you have a comment or a question?
I do, thank you. And I know you always see my hand up, so thank you. I guess my first question, you've pretty much answered, I think. I was concerned about Mr. Patel's new employee, that when he or she is hired, it seemed like they wouldn't be tested for six months. And it seems like it's only that one test that is only offered twice a year. So I would assume that a new employee would, as somebody mentioned tonight, be tested within the first week or tested before they actually start working. I think that would be a good thing.
And with Mr. Patel, we made it clear that if he hires a new employee, that he needs to present the certificate for that new employee to Lieutenant Pellequin.
And I think that might be a good idea on the notice that you all are working up to put that in too, that for new employees, that needs to be a quick turnaround for that testing. And the other thing is, you know, Lieutenant Pellequin talked about how close this store is, Mr. Patel's store is, to 495. And all three of the stores are pretty close to 495 that I know of. It would just be nice to have, people know that the Select Board and the Police Department are serious about not, about training people and having competent people in those stores to check things. And so I, I really am excited that you're basically sending out a letter to all of them saying, you know, within three months, your renewal, you need to be recertified or make sure your certification is up to date. It seems like every, do they renew every year?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so basically, they would only have to do this every three years.
The training, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So that's great. So, but thank you for all your care about this. You know, it's a tough situation. I think the cost isn't very much. The time is probably somewhat significant. But I think it's important that owners, you know, I would opt for all three tests for owners because they, they do bear the responsibility of the license. But thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. All right. So I think we have a consensus that we have a, a working group of Scott, Jody, and Patty and Lieutenant Pellequin, and you're going to come back to us maybe November 9th. But if you need more time, you'll let us know. So thank you all for your hard work. We appreciate it. All right. Next on our old and new businesses, we have a request from the Planning Board for additional members for their working group established to explore the needs and feasibility of electric vehicle charging stations throughout the town. Anita, I'm just looking, Jody?
Go ahead, Anita. I'll speak second.
Now, if you have background to this, then maybe you'll answer my questions.
Actually, why I asked her first, Anita, is that I figured she had a background. I was looking to see if Jeff was here, but go ahead.
I don't think anybody felt they needed to come. They just wanted us to announce that the Planning Board is forming a working group to take a look at this issue and that they're looking for volunteers to assist with this. And I think a lot of it is in new development and should they be making room for electric charging stations and make that a requirement, things like that? So that, we were just asked to make that announcement.
Got it. Anita?
Yeah, I was just confused because we, you know, we accepted that grant for the charging stations and like Abbott, Westford Academy and, and Town Hall for us to start the working group felt a little bit backwards. So I didn't know if there was anyone, or if you, Jody, could kind of speak to that a little bit, or if you know why we're doing it now.
Well, this is, this is really for projects under the Planning Board's review and authority. So the town felt it was important to establish these stations and we applied for grants and did it. But they want to see bigger picture beyond municipality, what is needed? And how might they change, you know, their requirements in their planning for new design, you know, new construction or reconstruction?
I don't mean to speak for the Planning Board, Anita, but I suspect they might be looking at and considering whether there need to be zoning changes that permit charging stations and developments, or whether there should be changes to the rules and regulations for subdivisions to permit that. So I suspect that that's part of what they're looking for and that they're going to be looking into with this working group.
Thank you. That makes, that makes sense.
Okay. John, do you have your hand up or are you just waving?
No, no, I was surprised to see that on the Planning Board's agenda. That looks like something for our Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee to be looking at. And it's all part of climate change and those considerations. So there should be some maybe cooperation between the two. But I think it should be clear that maybe for the Planning Board needs, it's for zoning and, and new developments and things like that versus the overarching thing of how many do we need for the entire community? Where are we going to put them? Who's going to get the grants? How does that fit in with the climate change initiatives? How does it fit in with clean energy? So there has to be some kind of synergy in between those two, I would think.
I would agree, but I'm just pleased that the Planning Board is starting to think along the lines of clean energy and electric vehicles and climate change. So I, you know, we, we should encourage them to do so.
Okay.
Okay, so announcement. Next item, we have a request from the committee to study ways to increase attendance at town meeting to change the committee's name to Access to Town Meeting Committee. Okay, Diane, I know you're out there. You've been out there since the beginning of our meeting. So we've made it to you finally.
We have. So. Eric, I don't need to be on video, okay? Can you hear me?
We're not.
All right. So, so basically from day one, I think we all violently agreed that the name of the committee was very long and it was just a way to collapse the name so that it fit on distribution lists. And it made sense as it relates to having access to town meeting, not necessarily participate in go, physically go to a town meeting and vote. So it kind of broadened the umbrella of what we're investigating and looking into. So it's Access to Town Meeting.
With the acronym of ACT. I like it.
Or ATM, right?
Go to your ATM.
Right. The other, the other thing I wanted to add is we've had two members resign. So if there are residents out there who, who have the time and energy to devote to the committee, we'd be glad to have them come on board. So I'd like to share that information.
Okay. So anybody who is interested in becoming a member of the Access to Town Meeting Committee, please submit your application, your citizen's. please submit your application, your citizens' application form online and for our consideration. Scott?
I guess I'm curious about, you know, when I hear access, I'm thinking about, you know, there are certain if legal implications there. Is it access for disabled people, for you know, other, other demographics? And isn't it really, we're trying to get increased participation in town meeting? And this, I was, I was kind of wondering if we had a better word in participation than in access, that was all.
Well, we had attendance. So attendance was in the initial title. So we switched from attendance to access. I had initially thought and threw out the idea that we could have done a survey to the committee, a survey to the community, asking for their input. However, we didn't want to spend time on, on that versus actually getting things done and coming up with some suggestions to, to present to you.
Okay. I guess you're, I guess we need to, to vote to change the name of the committee. So is there a motion to change the name of the committee to Access to Town Meeting Committee?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, John?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea, did you see Mike's comments in the Q and A? Mike Borlinsky from the Energy Sustainable Committee.
Yes. I am seeing it now. Mike Borlinsky states that regarding John's comment, the Sustainability Committee is plugged into the Planning Board and this working group.
Good.
Mike loses, Mike uses a lot of abbreviations. I have to figure them out. But I got him, Mike. All right. We're at our, oh, our next item is a request from the Healthy Westford Committee to appoint Sherri Bane and Ray Dick as school members for terms expiring on June 30th, 2022, and to reduce the membership of the committee to seven full member seats and one alternate seat for quorum purposes. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All those in favor, Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi. You're all set, Bill. Okay. I'm going to take, I'm going to flip five and six on our agenda because I think it's a further, a longer discussion about our town manager goals than it will be about Elizabeth Almeida's request for support. So we have a request for a food security infrastructure grant application for funding a delivery vehicle for Fat Moon Farm LLC submitted by Elizabeth Almeida, who's the owner of Fat Moon Farm LLC. So Elizabeth, do you just want to briefly tell us what you're looking for?
Sure. Yes. Good evening. Thank you, Andrea, and hello, everyone. So what I'm looking for this evening is a vote of support. I'm not asking the town for any money. I don't need the town to do anything. The state has made money available under this grant, the Food Security and Infrastructure Grant. I think this is probably federal COVID money. This grant has been open a few times in the past year, and it recently opened for another round of funding. And the idea is to support local farms and anyone involved in the food sector to hopefully strengthen our local food system. So one of the questions on the grant application is if I have the support of my local community, and I need to check a box, yes, hopefully, and a letter of support from all of you saying that you support this application and support my business would be a help to my, to hopefully receiving the funding.
Okay. Questions, John?
Yeah, just one comment. You know, 20,000 pounds, that's a lot of mushrooms. I didn't realize that. But anyway, I support this. I looked at the application and everything else, and I think it fits the bill. And I think I would recommend we support it.
Thank you, John.
Okay. Is there a motion? John, is that a motion?
Yeah, so moved.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, John?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. We'll get you a letter. Elizabeth, when does the application have to be submitted?
By the end of the week.
Okay. We'll give you a letter, okay?
That's fine. It can be a very brief letter, you know, just affirming that my community supports me. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Always mushroom.
Okay. Now we can go back to a review of the draft 2021, 2022 Select Board Town Manager Goals. So Jody has given us a draft that I have somewhere here of her, of her proposed goals. And so Jody, do you want to briefly run through them? And then any comments or suggestions that the board might have, we can take as well as any comments from the audience.
Sure. Thank you. I tried to update this with input from department heads and boards, and it is, you generally don't approve this on the first night. So I'm open to all edits. So the first is to adhere to the fiscal year '23 budget policy direction, which we're already doing, and you already voted that direction. The second is to provide departmental support to diversity, equity, and inclusion. We have been doing that, and I believe this might be exactly what it said last year, but just support them in any way that we can. The second, I did run this by Tom and Scott, the co-chairs of Town and School Safety Task Force. So we basically are continuing our work and bringing recommendations to the Select Board or Town Meeting. And also, I can't see this because of our window box here. I guess I can look at my own. Also, to support the William James Interface Referral Service, which we're, we have on our ARPA list. The next one is a continuation of working with the Permanent Town Building Committee to coordinate the demolition of the old fire station and continue the design of the new and bring to town meeting in the spring. The next one is new, and that would be to develop a process to allow you to evaluate and prioritize ARPA requests. And the plan would adhere to the deadlines to allocate funds by December 2024 and all spending by December 2026. The next one is also new, and this is after town meeting vote to establish a health insurance trust fund. And we brought this to town meeting. They approved it. We're, we're already meeting to discuss this. It is a lot of work, and it's a big project, which we believe will better position the town moving forward for health insurance. 35 Town Farm, we revised this goal to reflect what's happening right now, which is basically getting this over the finish line with choice and also constructing the new fire training facility. The next one is kind of another update on 12 North Main to continue the cleanup efforts. And we did add to obtain the Historic Commission's recommendations for the property. They are analyzing that right now. The next one would be, it was an updated technology, cyber risk. I worked the language with Mike Wells. And number 10 is to continue to monitor the impacts of Newport Materials Asphalt Plant, and also continue to coordinate compliance with the settlement agreement. And we are presenting a short presentation on that tonight. The next one is, 11 is a continuation of working with Westford Healthy Committee. 12, I believe, is new, which is to work with the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, and lots of other folks. And also, I did add explore options for establishing a sustainability coordinator. I know that's something that is near and dear to people's hearts, and they're asking you to do so. So I put that on there and figured you could tell me what to do with that. And then to work with the Economic Development Committee and engage the public to explore possible amendments to the town zoning bylaw to help businesses better adapt to the effects of COVID. This is also new, but we thought because of COVID and the long-term impacts, perhaps you want us to work a little closer with the local businesses. So that was my list to get, at least get the conversation going.
Okay. So here we go. Comments from the board? So who's panelists? Oh, Anita, I was gonna say, somebody has their hand up there. Anita, thank you.
I do have a couple of thoughts that maybe we could, if we're going to be passing around this draft a little bit before we approve it or something in our next meeting, that I would like to make a couple of tweaks. But I do want to say that I was really happy to see the one on cyber attacks. I think I've been talking to Mike Wells too much, but I worry about, especially since we do so much online now, being able to, to make sure that we're really secure virtually is great to see on this list. And the part that I would want to beef up a little bit is number two with the DEI Committee and kind of reflecting on our conversation earlier in the meeting, how to be able to not just support, but to help provide leadership, I think, across our town departments around DEI issues. And maybe if it's around, as Tom was saying, like recruiting or hiring, maybe adding some language to that. So I'd like to offer some edits.
Okay. Is that, is that the only one? You started this with, you had several.
Yeah, I have a couple of, I think one, and I don't know where this would fall, because it could be under diversity, equity, inclusion, and the idea of like an inclusive community, but, or if it's under T S S T F. But I think that there should be more like community engagement with our town departments, particularly the Police Department. I think we shouldn't rely on only like really national dire issues to have and develop that relationship with the police. I think it should really be based on like a continuous relationship, conversation and dialogue. So that would mean, and whether, where that fits exactly, I'm not sure. But I would love to kind of have more of an opportunity to concretize that into our goals as well, if the others agree.
Okay. Scott?
I think this is a really good list, and I really liked the way you handled the the possible position for sustainability coordinator, because I think you're right, it is near and dear to all of our hearts. And yet, how do we, you know, is that rational? Is that, you know, great money? How's that, how's that done, you know, in terms of financially? And how does that work with recycling? I like the way you phrase it, that we'll make it work, but we'll figure out how as we go along. So that, to me, I think was a key addition that has got really broad support, is really important. And I think is handled well. I guess under the you know, the, the asphalt plant, I guess, do we ever have pedestrian safety as part of that, that group? I'm thinking in terms of sidewalk money that was, or sidewalk pavement that's allocated in the settlement. Would we ever, I guess, maybe it's become a DPW?
Jody?
Yes. So you want me to answer your second question first about Newport Materials? So what we do with the mitigation is that any project goes through capital first, and pedestrian safety put their priorities through capital. And once capital decides what the priorities are, at least for our recommendation, then we look at the Newport mitigation monies and decide what we can fund with the mitigation. So it goes through capital, pedestrian safety is part of that, and then we take it on to sort out how we're going to either pay for it or use mitigation. So yes, they are actively involved in that. And then your second question, Scott, or comment, thank you, about the clean energy. So there are grants available. As a matter of fact, there is an efficiency and regionalization grant, which opens up in January, and I think it closes February 10th. And we're thinking that this would be a perfect place for us to apply to fund this position. So that's my hope. If we're not able to fit it in the budget, that we are able to get it through that program.
Thanks, Jody.
I think it's a great list. Jody, I made a list of everything I hoped to see before we started, and you had everything that I'd listed on there. But since I like both of Anita's suggestions a lot, sort of promoting continuing community dialogue, especially with some of our diverse communities that we're focusing on the DEI side. And I think that maybe working with the DEI Committee, whether it's a couple of times a year or three times a year, whatever, to identify kind of a rich discussion topic that we can all take on together, and might be diversity hiring, might be other things too. But I think they might benefit from a little bit of a nudge in terms of, of some of the structure. The other thing that's sort of a, something that's hanging out there a little bit unresolved, and I don't have a strong opinion about where this belongs on your list, since I know you're focused on it already, is the Town Center Building. It feels like we kind of are still working to get that all the way over the finish line. Maybe there's, I know it's still an actively sort of discussed issue in the community. And so I'm not sure if that, if that belongs there or not, but just, just a thought.
Jody, do you want to respond?
Yes. So the Town Center Building is on here.
Number four.
Number four. But, but I do want you to know that I am working with the Permanent Town Building Committee. They did meet recently. I did send you an email that I am asking them to carve out a few more offices because I'm hearing more staff that people want to hire. So we are full steam ahead. And as soon as they get that worked out, we're going to start our public meetings to re-educate. So we are completely committed to trying to get this to town meeting and move forward.
Okay. John, I think, did I see you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just, one of my concerns, kind of long-term concerns, has been open space in the town. And the last time I looked, about 25% of the town is either owned by the town itself or under protection of some sort. I think that's changed some. But it's been a long time since I've seen an open space report. I know we did the comprehensive master plan 15 years ago, or more than that, I think. And, yeah, about 15 years ago. And the question is, should we be looking at some kind of a plan for moving forward as far as how much open space we need to maintain, or we need to acquire, how that fits into climate change and all those things. But I just, that just kind of sticks in the back of my mind that we should be addressing that. And I know the Conservation Commission's involved in that. And I don't know, it just sticks in the back of my mind that we haven't really raised that up to where it's got that much visibility. And we seem to be surprised when something comes up for sale. And then we got to scramble to figure out whether we want to buy it or not, or whether we want to preserve it or not. And I was just thinking about, maybe a better plan there. I don't know where I'm going with this, except it just hangs out there. And I don't know whether we should consider something like, you know, a master plan for the future in terms of facilities, open space, that sort of thing. I know capital planning's got their plan. But I don't know, just a concern of mine. The rest of the list looks great. I, I like the list. I'd like to delve into that DEI Committee item. Keep in mind that their main part of their charter is to advise this board on what we're to do in forwarding their mission.
All right. Okay. You know, I mean, John, I hear you about open space. Maybe the place to really start with that is, you know, to go to the, back to the Conservation Commission and the Conservation Planner to see if, you know, I mean, they did years ago have a list of, you know, sort of properties that were of importance to them. And if they became available, you know, whether they were priorities for the town to purchase or not. And maybe, maybe the place to start is to ask them to, you know, look at that list, update it, you know, you know.
I guess what I think, Andrea, was just it needed a higher level look. I know it's vibrating down there somewhere. I'd like to have some visibility into it. I guess I could do that personally and ask for it, or something. I guess I could do that personally and ask for it, or something at our level or the select board level. That's my thinking on it. Okay.
You know, Jody, I just had one, I love the list. I had one minor comment on the, at the end with the Economic Development Committee, because you say, "Explore possible amendments to the town zoning bylaw to help businesses better adapt to the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic." I guess I, my thought is I don't want to limit it to just looking at zoning bylaws. So I would just say to explore ways to help the businesses as opposed to just limiting it to looking at zoning bylaws.
Yeah, that's a great idea. So I will make that edit. And if you want, I will send the word version to all of you. And if you've got some edits you'd like to make yourselves, then we can bring it back to our next meeting.
Great.
Sound good?
Okay, that sounds good. So we'll bring it back to our November 9 meeting for all of us to consider.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, we are at our 8:50 PM item, which was Board Reports and Updates. Anybody have any Board Reports and Updates? Okay, I don't see any. Minutes for approval. We have minutes from September 28, 2021, and October 5, 2021, of regular session for release. Is there a motion to approve and release those minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, second.
All those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Town Managers Report. Jody, update on Newport Materials Settlement Mitigation Usage?
Yes, so as I mentioned, we did give you a memo in your packet kind of explaining our strategy on the Newport Materials Settlement Agreement. So I don't need to go through it. I just wanted you to know what we've been doing with it. We consider the mitigation kind of fluid. So maybe we might do a mile or two more of road one year and then less the next year, as long as we get everything we're due. The owner has been willing to work with us. So it's really more just to give you an update. We also gave this document to Capitol and to the Finance Committee. And Steve Cronin, I believe, is here, but it's really only if you have any questions, or we can also bring it to a future meeting, too.
Any questions? Don't see any. Jody, thank you and Steve for putting this list together over what's gone on for the past two years. Much appreciated. Okay, we have a request to change the fiscal year 2022 Non-Union Wage and Classification Plan to adjust the salary levels of the Council on Aging Van Drivers and Transportation Dispatchers.
So this is pretty simple. We did a market basket analysis. We are underpaying these people. You vote to increase the bands for us, and so we're asking to do so so we can retain those valuable band drivers that we have. And we did put the materials in your packet.
Any questions or comments? Motion, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second. All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next item is, we have gone out with our, I believe it's an RFP or an RFQ for our energy service company. And we're asking which select board member might like to participate with that as we decide who to award that contract to.
Anybody like to volunteer? Oh, don't all raise your hands at once.
I'd be happy to.
Okay, Tom, thank you.
Next, we're asking you to accept a gift from the Friends of the Forge Pond for $15,000 for the Forge Pond Outlet Channel Improvement Project.
Is there a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye.
So then I had the contracts, and I did ask John Giorgio to join us, and he is here. If you would like, I can read through all of them, and then if you want an explanation.
Jody, why don't you hold out the cornerstone construction and remodeling for the windows, but then go through the rest of them, okay?
So the other contracts are Fennec McCready Architecture for the Recreation and Aquatic Center Feasibility Study in the amount of $85,000. JJF, JJF, Universal Construction Company for replacement of the asphalt shingle roof at the Rogers Fire Station in the amount of $66,000. CJF Excavation for mechanical removal of accumulated materials for the stream bed of the Forge Pond Outlet Channel in the amount of $55,000. Mayor Services for the installation of test wells at the Depot Road Well Site, amount of $16,725. And Purchase Orders CX Tech for network switches in the amount of $250,000. And CDW Government for Microsoft Enterprise Services, the amount of $53,004.5 and 53 cents.
Scott?
Just a question on the, on the well drilling. Is that coming out of the Water Enterprise Fund or out of the budget?
That is coming out of Water Enterprise, and that was on the town meeting warrant.
Great, thanks.
Okay, any other questions about those contracts or purchase orders? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve those contracts and purchase orders?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the one that we held is Cornerstone Construction and Remodeling for the Restoration of Historic Windows at the Westford Museum in the amount of $90,657. And John Giorgio is here. As you know, we did have an attorney for the low bidder that we deemed disqualified, who made a statement at the open forum. So John, I thought maybe you could just summarize to the board why we made the decision we did.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can, John. We can see you, too.
Yes. There you go. That's not, not much to see, but that's okay. So I got involved in this matter last week when your Facilities Director contacted me on Jody's recommendation. What happened with this bid project is the town received two bids, and Unicon was the apparent low bidder. But when he submitted his bid, he failed to acknowledge in writing the receipt of addendum number two. And for those of you who may not be familiar, the bid specifications had a mandatory pre-bid conference where potential bidders. I'm sorry?
No, that was. Jennifer Claro, thank you. Okay, go ahead, John.
And so the, they had a pre-bid, mandatory pre-bid conference, walked the site, asked questions. And the Facilities Director indicated at the end of that that there were essentially three opened items, which the town would have to issue an addendum for. And so those items involved, the first one was whether or not the contractor would have to follow federal historic guidelines when doing the renovation. The second one had to do with whether or not replacement of paint, window panes and hardware had to be historic, or could it be new? And so that was taken under advisement. And then the last one had to do with what the scheduling for the work was. And, and, and that was taken under advisement as well. So the town then proceeded to issue addendum number two, sent, sent that addendum to everyone who registered at the pre-bid conference. And as I said, the requirement is that you must acknowledge receipt of that addendum when you file your bid. And the reason for that is it's imperative that everyone is on the same level playing field and that a bidder cannot, at a later date, claim that they weren't aware of those requirements, because they weren't actually in the, in the bid specifications. They were contained in the addendum. So the Facilities Director and I looked at this, and we concluded that those items affect the bid price. In some instances, they may have, may have resulted in a lower bid. For, for example, if, if you could replace window panes and hardware with new materials rather than historic, that would affect the price. And Unicon, so Unicon was rejected because they didn't file the acknowledgement of the addendum until three days later. And Paul Fox had had communications with an attorney by the name of Deborah Anderson, who heads up the bid protest unit at the Attorney General's Office. And I believe you had her response in your packet. But Deb Anderson, who's been doing this for a very long time, advised Paul that those three items did indeed affect the bid price. And she said that the town would have to reject that bid. So that, that's what the town did. And now before you is the bid to the second lowest bidder, the only other bidder, Cornerstone. And I've had several communications with Attorney Butler, who I believe presented to you earlier tonight. His latest email came to me last night where he claimed that because the bid form contained a certification that the bidder would perform all of the work in accordance with all of the requirements that the town had put forward, that that, in effect, included addendum number two. And I just plain disagree with that analysis, Madam Chair. When that, when that bid was issued, addendum number two did not exist. These three items were not addressed adequately in the bid specifications. And so this process of having the pre-bid conference, issuing the addendum, and having the bidders acknowledge receipt of the addendum, that process is exactly the way it's supposed to work in the public bidding arena. And so we have to be concerned not only with the disappointment of Unicon, but acknowledge the fact that we do, we did have another bidder. He was, I think, $15,000 more than Unicon, but, and was awarded the bid. And so we have to be concerned with what is fair to that bidder as well. And we, the term you hear all the time is you cannot unlevel the playing field. A bid has to be fair competition. Everybody has to be bidding on the same set of documents, and there's no way to assure that that can occur unless bidders acknowledge in writing the receipt of the addendum when they submit their bid. Unicon admittedly did not do that. So I believe the town manager, the Facilities Director, and myself agree with the determination by the Attorney General's Office, and that's why the town manager is recommending a ward of this bid to Unicon. Excuse me, to Cornerstone. Yeah, so I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, John. Jody?
Yeah, I just want to add quickly that it was clearly stated in the invitation that this form was going to be required to be submitted with their bid, and it was also clearly stated on the form. So I, you know, I think the person just either didn't pay attention to that or what. But anyway, I just wanted to mention that it was clearly stated.
Okay. Scott?
I want to thank John and Paula and Jody for really making these things very clear to a layman, such as myself. So thank you all three of you for your insight and professionalism.
You're welcome.
I agree, public bidding can be incredibly complicated. All right, seeing no other questions. Is there a motion to approve awarding cornerstone construction and remodeling for the rest, the contract for the restoration of historic windows at the Westford Museum in the amount of $90,657?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, John, thank you very much for joining us tonight and for your thorough explanation. Much appreciated.
You're very welcome. Good evening, everyone. I hope you, your drive home is safe tonight. Oh, you're already at home, yeah. Never mind. Never mind, yes. I'm down on the Cape. It's pretty bad right now outside, so anyhow.
All right, good night. Okay, is there a motion to waive reading correspondence?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, just by a show of hands, all in favor of waiving reading correspondence? Okay, and with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor? All right. Good night, everybody. Everybody, Westford, stay safe in this storm. Be careful, and thank you all for tonight. Good night.